Meeting of the City of Port Ritchie this 28th day of April, the year 2015. If we'll all rise for the invocation from Reverend Spaldy, please.
Dear God, our Divine Spirit, Creator of all there is and ever shall be, we ask you to send extra blessings down to our little city. For all who run the city, for all who work in the city, for the policemen and the firemen that they stay safe. We pray for all the residents of the city. We ask that you allow our council, our mayor and council, to make the highest decisions for the good of our people. We ask you to guide us all in the right direction. For this, we are thankful. Amen.
If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Eloise Taylor.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bill Colombo.
Here.
Councilwoman Steve O'Neill.
Here.
Councilwoman Nancy Britton.
Here.
Councilman Terrence Rowe.
Here.
City Attorney Joseph Public.
Here.
And City Manager Tom O'Neill.
Here.
All right, the first item to deal with is approval of the City Council minutes of April 15th, 2015. Do I have motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any additions, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any announcements, Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, briefly, Jocelyn and I attended the Board of County Commissioners meeting last week. There were items on there with regard to the Restore Act submittal. And it was learned that we had a number of comments on our multi-year implementation plan. There will be a Restore Act committee meeting on May 7, and we will attend that meeting in support of our plan. And there are issues with regard to environmental mitigation and some other issues on the city's project proposal, and also the county's Sun West Park proposal. So we'll be working on that. I just wanted to let you know.
Mr. Spaldy?
I have nothing, see you, Mayor.
Okay. All right, comments from the public.
Thomas Brown, 7436 Candlelight Court. I came to the meeting tonight to hopefully hear the city council, the city manager, and perhaps the city attorney discuss Lake Cox. Their decision as to whether it is a dug or natural body of water will affect six homeowners and their families on Candlelight Court in the city of Port Ritchie. If tonight's agenda is too full to discuss the Lake Cox issue, I have requested that it be discussed at the May 12 city council meeting. Now about the Restore Act, I do not understand how the U.S. Treasury Department Federal Restore Act can allocate money to pay for projects that don't restore anything. If a person files a claim to restore his lost income or property damage caused by the Deepwater Horizon oil spill, and it is proved that his loss was not caused by the oil spill, he is charged with fraud. If the city wants the Restore Act to pay to relocate a boat ramp that was not damaged by the oil spill, and it is not being restored to its condition before the oil spill, how can that not be considered a fraudulent claim? Wouldn't one think that the purpose of Federal Restore Act is to make payments from the civil penalties levied against BP and other companies to restore income loss and property loss that was caused by the oil spill? Why would a Federal Restore Act allocate $195,000 to Pasco County to add restrooms on the north side of Sun West Park when nothing is being restored?
Mr. Booth.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Steve Booth, 7510 Ridge Road in Port Ritchie. And I'm here tonight to ask you if you would consider placing an issue that I have before the council at some point in the not-too-distant future. I represent three RV parks and one mobile home park, all of which are located outside of the city, but they are within your water franchise area. My clients, we believe, have been being charged water rates that are illegal and unfair, and we would request an opportunity to come before you to explain our position on it, so that hopefully we can come to some resolution without having to seek other remedies. As an example, just to give you a brief situation, one of my clients has a park, an RV park, in the city, and he also has one in the county. And in a comparable billing period, he used half as much water in the city than he did in the county, and was indeed charged twice as much in the city than he is in the county. And it creates unfair competitive advantage to those other RV parks and mobile home parks that are in the county. And I've explored the ordinance that you have and have done a lot of research to determine the propriety of what's being done here. And we believe that even though Mr. O'Neill and I have met probably six or seven times in an attempt to come to some type of an understanding of maybe how we could deal with the situation, that has been unsuccessful. And the opportunity, I think, to hopefully resolve this amicably with council is here, and that's the direction that we hope to go forward with. So I would request that you consider setting a time certain when we could come before you and lay this entire thing out. Mr. O'Neill has indicated that we'd have to work at a time when the city's expert who did the rate study and everything and guided the council, that we would be able to find a mutually convenient time that we could make that presentation to you.
Thank you.
Claudia Smith, 7335 Candlelight Court. Only reason I'm here tonight is just to commend one of your employees. I have worked with Jocelyn for the last few months on the waterfront park playground, and we'll, I think we're going to talk about that in a few minutes. But what I have found is that in all the years that I have been in business and worked for companies, that one of the things that a lot of people lack is follow-up, and I have found her follow-up to be one of the best. She, even before I asked for something, or there was some sort of question, she is responding. And I want to make sure that she is recognized because she's truly an asset to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lane Lee, 5713 Berlin, Port Ritchie. I've come before you tonight to introduce to you a small group of people. Some of you probably know, and some of you that you don't. Their names are Nancy Britton, Jocelyn Martinez, Claudia Smith, who was just up here, and Carrie Poulsen, and myself. I'm the appointed president by them. We have formed a group known from now on to be Play Port Ritchie. And I know what you're thinking. I have surrounded myself with brains and beauty. Our goal is to make family-friendly improvements to our waterfront park. We are in the process of partnering with Investigation Station to utilize their 501(c)(3) and are looking forward to starting a GoFundMe page and a Facebook page. We have decided our first project will be a splash pad for the park. This project is probably the least expensive on our list, but could have the largest impact on our community. Other projects on our list are universally accessible play area, improving the parking area to accommodate ADA parking, new ADA restrooms, walkways, and who else knows what else. We can only hope through our efforts and that of others, the city can have improvements made to its waterfront park through the generosity of others. We would like the council to recognize this group, and we hope we have your support and blessing. Thank you, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, or certainly get you an answer as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Thank you for your participation.
Hello, my name is Stan Turecki, 5618 Regis Avenue. This is the first time I've been to a city council meeting, so if I do anything wrong, please forgive me. Yeah, I live at the intersection of Grand and Regis Avenue. There's two structures on that property, and one I'm in the process of demolishing, and plan to have that project completed in a week or two time. I've been spending a lot of time with the building department, trying to look at my options for rebuilding on that property, as it's a very long, narrow lot, being on Grand Boulevard. The lot's almost a quarter an acre in size, but it isn't even 50 feet wide, so it's non-conforming. I basically, at this point, have two probably what I think to be best potential paths to follow to rebuild, and I was hoping I can get some sort of informal response from the city council as to what you guys might feel to be the most appropriate path to take, seeing as how my thoughts on the subject might be different than what you guys think.
It's not really our responsibility or authority to give direction on building. It's the building official and the ordinances and regulations.
I appreciate that standpoint. What I'm trying to say is, there's two routes that I know I can go based on the ordinances, and they're fairly divergent, for lack of a better way of putting it. So the city council might view my idea as the best route to go as the second-best route, or not a best good route at all. Is that something that I can ask of you guys?
Probably not. Because of the procedures, it's going to go through the building official and through the formal procedures before we can get a crack at it.
Okay. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Milton.
Good evening, council. 5342 Blue Point, Richard Milton. I just had two quick questions. One, the CRA, will we have time to speak about that before that starts, or will there be public speaking for that this evening?
The CRA is following the city council.
Right, but will there be open public on that as well, was my question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'll leave that, my other portion of this. I realized, recently noticed, that SC Signature has permit box outside of a home that was recently slated for demolition. I'm curious as to if someone can tell me what's actually going on, because when I lifted the permit box, there was no paper in it. But they do have a SC Signature box outside of the house, so I'm curious as if it's actually going to be demolished, or it's going to be repaired. Blue Point, I don't have the address in front of me, it's just, it's the only one on Blue Point, I can assure you of that.
Sorry, we have about three of them, so.
That domed house on, yeah, it's the funky-looking.
We're waiting for one more bid. We wanted to get at least three. We put out to about seven contractors, and we're waiting on that, and then we have to do one more filing with the county.
Where would I find the bids that are applicable for that?
Well, we have them in the building department. They're, we haven't, the job hadn't been awarded yet to anybody. We just were soliciting.
So you're still taking bids?
Yes, we are.
Okay, that was my next question. So it is slated for demolition, though?
Yes.
Not repair?
No, it's slated to be demolished.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, to anyone else? All right, bring it back to council. Comments from members of council?
Over here, I have some. Okay, first of all, the splash pad. Our group is working really hard. We're working on a contract with the 501(c)(3) so that we have a place to take donations for this project, so it's not going to affect any of the taxpayers in the city. The only thing we will have to do once it's put together and made is to maintain it. And we're working on what those costs will be, but I think they're relatively small. Otherwise, most of the cities want to put them in, like Tarpon and Dunedin and so on and so forth. So Mr. Lee was asking for your blessing, so I'm asking, do we have your blessing, council, to go forward with this project? Just a consensus? I mean, you know, anyway. So I guess I'm not going to get it.
I don't see where a blessing even comes into play at this point.
Well, you know, I just want you all to know what we're doing, and, you know, know that, are you all behind it, and you're okay with us going forward, basically?
Well, I think the ongoing position of council has been we're supportive of the improvements and moving forward on, you know, the ADA accessible as well as the new improvements. So, yes, I think the answer is yes.
Well, I think, I just wanted to do that because I think our group would like to hear that from the council. And then I just have something very interesting I ran across while going through some files I think that you all really appreciate. The title, this comes from a newspaper, July 8 of 1982, the West Pasco Press, and it says, "Who Pays for Miller's Bayou?" I don't know, do I have to give this to Tammy or may I pass it around? Basically, this is a 33-year-old newspaper that I have right here, and this whole article is about dredging Port Ritchie, 33 years ago. So I thought everybody might enjoy this.
I just hope it's not another 33.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. Tom, anything on the reclaimed water? I know there was an update recently.
Yes, we attended a meeting of the Southwest Florida Water Management District Governing Board Committee. They voted in favor of our project, along with the other higher-ranked projects. There is one more governing board meeting in June where they will take their final vote. I'm very encouraged by their action. Our chances are favorable at this point, because generally, their higher-ranked projects are all funded.
Back in February, we had talked about the illegal dumping. I don't know if I can ask Pat any of this. Since that particular time, have you noticed, you know, I mean, a lot of change? I mean, I drive around, I still see a lot of sites where, you know, I mean, this is the season, obviously.
It drops off and then it comes back. So it's going to be a constant battle.
Okay.
I just could respond to you. Sherry from Code Enforcement has indeed caught.
And thank you for the report.
Yeah, she's indeed caught several people on that. They've been cited, and they've been fined.
Okay, I was going to ask, because we had set up that ordinance, and it set up those particular fine numbers some time ago. All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Booth has requested that we put on the agenda the rate structure for the mobile home parks that are outside the city. Before, if we address that, Mr. O'Neill has prepared for us some summaries of the usage, at least at J-Mar, and I would ask that Mr. O'Neill speak to this item before, you know, as council, we decide what we're going to do.
Yes, I had asked Sal LaCary several months back, and also today, to prepare the spreadsheet that you see in front of you. This lists the past six months of the water bill information for the J-Mar Travel Park. That is on US 19, north of the city. There are five parks outside the city limits, two within the city limits. These numbers are typical of the parks that are outside the city limits. J-Mar is being billed at the mobile home park rate. You will see the consumption, the total monthly bill, and the average price per unit that they are responsible for. When they used, as an example, in the month of April, for the April billing period, they used a total of 730,000 gallons. Their bill was $4,300, and that averaged out to $10 per unit for their water bill. And as each of you know, on council, that's far less than you pay at your own residences for water service from the city of Port Ritchie. This is averaged over the 398 units that are in J-Mar, and like I mentioned, it is typical of the other billing circumstances for the other parks. This is how their bills would be averaged over a six-month period, which would generally reflect what you would see in a typical year. It goes as low as $6.61 per unit, up to $10.80 when they used their highest consumption. So this is just for information purposes. I just thought it would be interesting for you all to know this.
Well, I think if we were going to move in that direction, and certainly, this has been brought forward, I would encourage the council that we have Burton and Associates here. If we're going to get both sides of the situation. Now, I guess the other, Tom, just to, and again, I know this will come up when we have discussions, but there was reference of the example given of the city and county, a particular customer, and obviously, the example, half as much water used, and yet, you know, the dollars were significant the other way. So that's already a question mark. And then I guess my other question is, if the deal is so much greater with the county, why are they still with us? Just a question, you know, anyway.
Well, I mean, do they have any choice but to be with us, in our service area? Right now, we have no service territory agreement with the county. They're free to seek service from Pasco County if they so desire.
Oh, okay. Okay. You know, I mean, as far as the subject goes in general, we have discussed it on a number of occasions. We've had folks from the different mobile home parks come here and speak to exactly the same subject, the service charge, and, you know, what they, how they feel about it. I don't see the need to agenda another meeting, or another agenda item, to basically cover ground that we've covered over and over. I mean, Burton and Associates put together a plan for us. As far as the legality of it, our attorney has looked at it and has voiced no opinion that it's otherwise. I think it's a fair and equitable approach, just in short. So as far as agending it, again, for discussion, and I'm against it. I just don't see the point. Well, you know, and that's the reason I said bring Burton in, is what we were told, you know, from Burton, is that this stood up legally. And obviously, if there are some questions, I realize we have two other council members here to make comment, but again, I'm certainly not against bringing this forward, but I think if we are, the arena has to be filled with Burton and Associates as well, in all Tom, what's involved if they were to go, if they wanted to go with the county? Do they use our piping? How does that work? Do they use our piping? How does that?
They would have to build off-site piping to connect to where the county main is.
Okay, so there would be some cost involved for them? There would be cost involved for them?
It's not really a free discussion. This is, you know, this is open, it was open to the public. Segment was kind of complete. Nobody likes to see increases in bills, utility bills. And obviously, when we do rate structures and rate increases, people are hit in the pocket, and that's not comfortable. But we have an enterprise that needs to be paid for, and in the event that we give some concession or relief to one group, then some other group in the city is going to make up the difference. And that's a big burden for other potential, you know, potentially our residents as well. So we considered this rate increase, it seems to me, about a year in duration, with recommendations and studies, and asking our consultant to come back and give us further information. And we sought to do what we thought was absolutely the fairest thing we could do, based upon our costs, and historically, this, some of the mobile home parks had been given a large break from the rate structure to a considerable cost to our operation. So I think, you know, we've been there, done that, and I'm not sure that we need to rehash it again.
We had considerable, too, when you look at what's changed, that CRA balance has changed as well, that, you know, was also servicing, I mean, as far as dollars spent utilizing CRA monies. Again, I won't say I'm close to it. I, you know, after this time, we're certainly going to have some fallout. This was, after all, a 10-year period where, you know, not much had happened, and obviously, recently, we spent a lot of time on this. You know, obviously, there's going to be some fallout, but, you know, again, I would just invite that we have Burton and Associates here if we're going to, if we're going to look at this again.
I don't feel it's necessary myself, because we went through this. I agree with the mayor. We went through this. I'm looking at these bills. A $10, the highest bill is $10.80 a month in April. I don't see that, you know, that's unreasonable for a mobile home unit to use per month. So I would not be in favor of rehashing the water bills, the water rates.
One other comment is that my understanding in looking at the newspaper article recently, that Pasco County is looking to restructure their rights. So the competitive disadvantage that Mr. Booth talked about may evaporate if their rate structure goes up. I'll recognize you for one short comment, Mr. Booth, if you want to come up.
I would like to add one thing to what you just said also, and that is that competitiveness between the city and the county really has nothing to do with anything. Each of us has a utility that has to be self-supporting. So it's not a matter of setting rates as compared to what some other entity is doing.
Mr. Booth?
Thank you. As I said, Mr. O'Neill and I met on numerous occasions, and I've outlined our position. I've sent a letter outlining all of the issues, and what you're speaking about, about having hashed all this over, is only one of the problems, the most significant problems, which Mr. O'Neill and I don't agree on, is the fact that they're not mobile home parks that are being charged a mobile home rate. They're RV parks, and the city fails to recognize. They're RV parks, and the city fails to recognize that they're not being charged under the proper ordinance. That is the crux, the biggest problem that we have with this thing. Has nothing to do with what you're talking about, with all this stuff being discussed, and it's fair rates and all that. We're not being charged properly. And I think you can understand that that creates a big issue. Mr. O'Neal will not recognize two of the parks as RV parks. They're zoned in the county as RV parks. They cannot put mobile homes in there. They meet all the statutory definitions of travel trailers. They are clearly a travel trailer park, but yet, we're being billed based upon these mobile home rates. Mr. O'Neal feels as though, and Tom, you correct me if I'm wrong, but he feels as though, based upon his observations, that a number of the units don't meet the requirements. What they do statutorily, they do based upon every other determination by any agency that we've been able to talk to, and, but we're still stuck with this. So it goes well beyond what you've already hashed out. And it's a serious problem, because you're doing it incorrectly. I appreciate an opportunity to come and make a full presentation.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neal, would you like to comment on that point?
Yes, Mr. Booth and I have met many times, as he said. We've visited all the parks, and we have a rate for an RV park, we have a rate for a mobile home park. The JMR park is currently classified as a mobile home park. We've charged at that rate, because the majority of the units in there are stationary, and they have cart ports on them. They're not able to be moved in any fashion different from any mobile home, and so we've charged them at that rate. I spoke to perhaps a compromise position with Mr. Booth, in that we agreed that X number of spaces in the JMR park would be classified as RV, and X number of spaces would be classified as mobile homes, and those are the ones that would be stationary and not be able to be readily moved. Mr. Booth informed me that that compromise position was unacceptable to him and his client, and so therefore, we were not able to reach a compromise, but I attempted, as best as I know how, to do so. And so, at one point, we may want to re-enter into that conversation. I think that's a fair compromise. Mr. Booth doesn't share that opinion, but I'd be willing certainly to reopen that discussion and see if we could reach a mutual agreement on that.
Okay. It's the pleasure of council.
You know, as I said, I think, you know, certainly having Burton here, although I understand what's being said, I still feel comfortable having that representative here. We spent a lot of time with that, with those folks. And, you know, at this particular point, as we mentioned, there would be some fallout. You know, we have to invite that back and have a discussion. And, you know, this appears to me to be a fair thing to do, because, you know, we basically have to, you know, at least a presentation to consider, to look at it. I think, you know, we know what we covered, we know what we changed as far as rates, et cetera, but I don't think there's anything wrong with hearing what's going to be brought forward.
Mr. Public, have you been included in these discussions? And what is your position, if you have one on this?
I was involved in some of the early discussions. Not knowing this was coming up for tonight, I really didn't review my notes. It's been some time since I was involved, so I'm not really prepared to speak on, to any depth on this. But I was involved in some of the initial meetings between Mr. O'Neal and Mr. Booth.
My suggestion would be, at this point, the problem as outlined just now by Mr. Booth has pretty, and sorry, sorry, behind you, this is not public comment. This is, this is...
I have some information.
I am just saying, it's just, it's not public comment, so, yeah, I'm sorry. I can't, I can't recognize you, even though I pretty much did. But as Mr. Booth laid out, you know, the basic problem that he has, or that I got from what he said, was that there are certain places being treated as mobile home parks as opposed to RV parks. Now, that seems like a pretty easy answer to get to me from our folks in the city and Mr. Public, is the determination on those properties, what they are. And have Mr. Public come back to us with that, and that we charge them at the proper rate. Simple as that. And it may not be what we want it to be, and if we have a mobile home, or a, shall we say, a RV park, that actually is, it looks a lot more like a mobile home park than an RV park, then well, we got a whole other issue there. We got, we got somebody that's zoned one way and using it another. We got a, you know, we have a use issue there. So again, I mean, those are more legal issues. I mean, my recommendation right now is, I'd like to see, I'd like to see a little more come back to us soon, and then we can address the issues. That would be my opinion. But until then, I wouldn't want to set a meeting specific.
All right. Acceptable? I agree with you, Bill. I will tell you, though, I know that there is quite a few people that live in this mobile home park, because I know them personally. So there's, I mean, there may be some people that are coming in there, in and out, different times of the year and whatnot, but I think the majority are stationary, but...
Well, let's find out what the facts are.
Yeah, right.
And then move forward from there.
Right.
Okay? All right, moving along to the agenda, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to council business. We have with us this evening, Students Working Against Tobacco. We've got a presentation. If, you know, you want to come up singly, or if you have a spokesperson, if you would come up to the podium, please.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Naomi Dosilit, and I'm the coordinator for Students Working Against Tobacco. And this evening, I have my students with me who wants to do a quick presentation to the council.
Here we have some folders that Mackenzie will hand out. I'll introduce myself. My name's Jasmine Ty. I go to Thomas E. Waitman Middle School, which is in Wesley Chapel. I'm in seventh grade, and I am the SWAT president of my group, in my school, and I'm also a part of SAB, which is Student Advisory Board.
I'm Dylan Ty, going to Waitman Middle School, and I'm in sixth grade, and I also participate in SAB.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Robertson. I'm a ninth grader at Landalex High School in Landalex, Florida. I serve on the SAB with these lovely other youth, and I also serve on the statewide board for SWAT, so that's an honor to get to do that. And we're so excited to get to be here today and present to you on candy flavored tobacco. So before we start, just by a raise of hands, how many of you guys know what candy flavored tobacco is? Awesome. Okay, so this presentation is going to talk about it really briefly. I have some examples that you guys can look at, too. So if you guys didn't know, tobacco use is the single most preventable cause of disease, death, and disability in the United States, and it's 100% preventable. So if people stopped using tobacco today, they would have less deaths, preventable deaths, and, you know, the numbers would skyrocket down, plummet. We know that flavored tobacco targets youth, because 90% of today's smokers started before they were 18, which means that somehow they got it illegally, somehow, we don't really know, and there was something there that made them want to start. And so nowadays, it's candy flavored tobacco. And there's different flavors, like chocolate, and orange, and vanilla, that hide the bad taste of tobacco that's, that kind of starts out. So kids found it really, really hard to start using tobacco, because it was so strong, and the taste of it was really bitter, and it wasn't like a cool thing to do, until they came out with candy flavored products that made it a little bit easier for kids to start. We know that kids are more likely to use them because of these industry documents that were leaked during a big lawsuit called the Master Settlement Agreement. And here's a quote in there, you guys can look at it, and it basically talks about how perceivably, if it's not, if it seems better with candy flavorings, then people will perceive it as being better all around. If it looks better, if it tastes better, if it leaves less, you know, remnants on you. And so it can't be that bad, and that's what we're worried. And so what's happened so far with candy flavored tobacco is that the Family Smoking and Tobacco Control Act banned the flare, banned the sale of flavored cigarettes. So flavored cigarettes are a lot different than regular cigarettes, because they're flavored, but the loophole that they found, tobacco company sound, was cigarellas, which are basically mini cigars that can be flavored. So it's the same concept as a cigarette that's flavored, it's just considered a cigarellaw. And so that's not included.
Here, what Mackenzie was talking about are cigarellas. They're not real, they're, like she said, they're kind of like the mini, yeah, cigars, I'm sorry. They're like mini cigars, they're about that big probably, and then, these are different flavors that they have. And here we have, I'm sorry, thank you. Here we have some other items, and over here, this is more likely a, oh, okay. These are, they're like, no, not those. Anyway...
Oh, sorry, this slide before.
Yeah, this slide before. It says no going back. Okay. It won't let you go back. I think it's on a, there you go. Okay. This is snooze. They're like orbs. Have you ever heard of Altoids, or breath mints, things like those, like Tic Tacs?
Yeah, and so basically, you guys, if you guys saw that little box, there, you can open it, too, if you want to. You can open it, and you can see inside what's in there.
Please don't eat it.
And what it smells like. You can open it.
Don't eat it, please.
You can open it. But you can open it. And so basically, in there, you can see all the different products. And what Jasmine was talking about before on this slide, those are Black and Mild, and those are basically pipe tobacco cigars that are in there, and those can be flavored. And then what she was talking about with the snooze is basically, they're chewed tobacco, so it's chewing tobacco in a little tea packet. So they had a hard time, kids had a hard time keeping the chewing tobacco in their jawline without it slipping back, the loose tobacco, and then swallowing it, and they would get sick when it gets in your stomach lining. It's a big mess. So what did tobacco companies do? They made snooze, which is a little tiny packet, and you can just throw it in, and it sounds so much easier, and these are flavored, and so we see these a lot with kids. Again, industry documents show us that they were directly targeting kids, because people couldn't hold it, kids couldn't hold it in their jaw.
Yes, like Mackenzie said, I'm sorry, I've been mixing up the different products. These, okay, these are what I was talking about. Strips, these are like what I have here, my brother also has. They're called Listerine Coolants. They're like little strips you put on your mouth, and they dissolve. Those are sort of what strips are. They contain tobacco in it, and they just dissolve in your mouth. We have here orbs. They look like Tic Tacs or little Altoids, which my brother has here. If you shake the orb, orbs, they also sound like different types of Tic Tacs, or in that case, Altoids. The sticks, these are, you make your own tobacco stick rolled up, kind of like a pixie stick, or like candy, candy sticks that you eat. This is basically what it is.
And so we see that tobacco use, this candy flavored tobacco use, is really prevalent among youth. And so this survey in 2014 Florida Youth Tobacco Survey showed that one in six youth between age 11 and 17 have tried tobacco products within the last 30 days, and you can see that. So that really shows you that it's not, you know, your 85-year-old male who is using candy flavored tobacco. You don't see them using bubble gum flavored cigarellas. That doesn't happen a lot. It's definitely targeted towards youth, youth, and we see them most conveniently in convenience stores. You know, your 7-Eleven. If you walk into 7-Eleven, I think it's really interesting, tobacco companies spend millions and millions and millions of dollars to try to get their products really, really close to eye level of children, next to other products that resemble candy. They try to make it, they try to make it all blend in. So next time you're in 7-Eleven, check it out. Take a picture. It's crazy. And so this is what we're doing now, policy-based, how we're attaching this to policy. So basically, in the state of Florida, as you can see in this map, and it's in your little packets, too, I think, should be in your little packets, that you can look at it closer, we are Pasco County, right above the Tampa Bay area. You guys probably know that. And so basically, you can tell right now that we have stripes. And what that means on this map is that we both, we have a city, at least one city, and a county resolution against candy flavored tobacco. So it basically tells people to urge, it urges people to cease and desist the sale of candy flavored tobacco. It's not saying that they have to, but it's urging them to. And so that's what, we've been going around the county and just trying to get passed in all these different areas, because it really does help, you know, decrease the amount of people using, the amount of people selling. It doesn't make them stop, but it urges them to do it. So it's like a strong urge, which is always good to hear from, you know, your city officials to hear things like that. So we've definitely seen it. I've seen it in my school. It's definitely, you know, going down. It's becoming less of a trend because of the things that we're doing. And we want to be able to go to our, you know, state decision-makers and tell them, wow, look at all of Florida, almost all of us have at least one city and the county. So that's why you see so many stripes, because the counties are doing such good work. Awesome. So that's pretty much candy flavored tobacco, and what we do with candy flavored tobacco.
Here we have the Pasco County Tobacco, Pasco County Tobacco Free Partnership and SWAT collect, they collected more than 4,000 signatures, which is really good. We got resolutions from Pasco County, Newport Ritchie, Zephyr Hills, San Antonio, and Date City. So we're hoping that you guys would give us a resolution. That's exciting. We want Pasco County and our state to be against candy flavored tobacco.
Yeah, what I mentioned before, the same kind of thing. A united movement is a lot better than sporadic counties really taking it on gung-ho, but when the entire state says, you know, wow, candy flavored tobacco, it's an issue, it's really impactful to decision-makers.
To learn more, just contact Naomi, you know, I can't really read the email, but just contact Naomi, and if you want to learn more and stuff, please come to our meeting May 14th.
It's at Restmuseum, and everybody's invited. It's a public event, and where people can come. It's our partnership meeting, which is basically where the community and SWAT get together and make awesome things happen. So everybody's invited, the public's invited, if anybody wants to come. It's a great opportunity to learn more about all the other things that we do. We don't just do candy flavored tobacco, Students Working Against Tobacco in general. The partnership covers a huge, vast amount of different things that are happening out there, new trending topics. We talk about different things like that. So if you're interested, 3:30 at Restmuseum, May 14th. It's a really great thing to go to, and there's also a lot of different people from there. American Cancer Society people are there, tons of different people.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you so much for having me.
Hang on, you're not done yet. We have a resolution in front of the city council, Resolution Number 15-03. It's a resolution by the City of Port Ritchie City Council, Florida, urging local retailers selling tobacco where youth have access to cease the sale and marketing of all fruit and candy flavored tobacco products. And obviously, the purpose of this resolution is to urge retailers to stop selling these products. Do I have a motion to approve? I've read it by the title.
Motion to approve. Motion is second.
Okay. Any discussion, any questions of our distinguished guests?
Just, you know, thank you all for getting involved. It's great to see, it's great to see kids getting involved and...
Thank you.
Not to really call you guys kids, young adults. It's great to see young adults.
We couldn't have done it without the awesome help of all the people who are with us here today. We have one of our coordinators, we have our coordinator, and then we have one of our chapter advisors, and we have someone from the state with us, and they've done so much work, too. And so they are also to thank for the awesome progress. And so they are also to thank for the awesome progress you've made.
Okay. All right, hold on, you're not excused yet. We have, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the resolution is duly passed. And I have the resolution for you.
Okay. Thank you so much. You did awesome. Can we take a picture with you? Would that be okay? Okay. Check it out. Thank you so much. All these little fields. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, could we ask them again, what were your names again? I, I just found it was very impressive, and, and it's nice to have young people come forward like that. I think you all have, I don't know if your parents are here as well, but you've got some very nice careers in front of you, I'm sure. Could you state your names again, though?
I'm Jasmine Ty.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Mackenzie Robertson.
Thank you.
And I'm Dylan Ty.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
All right, next we have Communication Workers of America Collective Bargaining Agreement and raises. Mr. O'Neill.
Yes, this matter is listed on the agenda tonight for your consideration. At the executive session on April 15, the contract which was ratified by the CWA was discussed, and it has been ratified, and it's on your agenda tonight for consideration. The key points of the agreement are that it is for a one-year term, beginning October 1, so it would be considered retroactive to October 1. And it commits the city to a 3% overall wage increase, which mirrors what the city agreed to with the PBA agreement. And the amount of 3% was budgeted in the current year budget for raises. And so this matter is covered under the budget that you have under effect at this time. The action of the council is to consider approval of this agreement. This would pertain and reflect the raises that you would give this year to all CWA members of the bargaining unit and other general employees that are not members of the CWA bargaining unit. The only other individuals that are not covered by this agreement is the city attorney and myself. So the action requested is approval of the agreement.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All right, any, any questions? Any input from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it passes. Next, consideration of deductive change order to the street improvement project. Mr. O'Neill.
Yes, in early April, excuse me, it wasn't early April. In the previous month, March, we approved the contract award for the street improvement project. The streets are listed on the attached memorandum. Limit Drive, Grand Boulevard, Fire Station, Nix Park Loop, Knights of Columbus Drive, Deidre Circle, Washington Street, and Leo Kid. We received your comments and direction. When this contract award was approved, we proceeded to negotiate a deductive change order, which lowers the amount of the contract award. What we did is we negotiated changes, deleting Washington Street, making certain changes at the fire station site, and also on Nix Park Loop. I'd like to just give you a brief explanation. You have a PowerPoint presentation both up on the wall, and copies for you as council members. On the Grand Boulevard site, what you can do if you desire to reduce the cost of that, as outlined in the change order, is we can do the drainage improvements, build the apron that meets the street, exiting the fire department, and conduct the drainage improvements and the cut and patch. And for appearances, we could seal coat the parking lot, as opposed to putting an overlay on it at this time. That amounts to a deductive change in the amount of $18,360. And that changes and lowers the amount of the fire station work from $81,440.21 to $63,080.21. Moving forward, and the plan sheets are in here, if you could turn to the plan sheet itself. This is also included in your packet. It shows the work that's to be done at the site to fix some of the areas that have deteriorated severely on the fire station site. And it, there's a note on the contract drawings that included an inch and a half overlay. And if we delete the overlay, we could seal coat it, it would be structurally sound, and you would save that money at this time. Moving on to the Nix Park Loop, the revised scope of work here still includes the planned cut and patch on the entire paved surface. And it, once again, eliminates the overlay on the entire Nix Park Loop. But it would reconstruct and repave the area that is severely deteriorated between the boat ramp and Bayview Street. And once again, if you decide you wanted to, we could seal coat the entire surface out there, and it would look very presentable if we did that, and still be structurally sound. So we would minimize our, our capital outlay on this. This would reduce the price of the Nix Park work by $10,215. The revised total would be $41,836.55. And the original contract award was in the amount of $52,051.55. And moving on to the drawing itself, which is in your, in your packet, this shows the Nix Park Loop, the boat ramp, the entire site, the areas of cut and patch are in here, and the areas of total reconstruction are in here, where there are numerous potholes, and the road base is severely deteriorated on the site. So it generally reconstructs the southern side of Nix Park, and leaves the northern side of Nix Park without the overlay. It does happen to be in pretty good condition at this time, and it's serviceable for a while longer, while the city council decides whether or not to move the boat ramp. So if you decide, we could approve this deductive change order. Later on, at another date, you could decide to do this additional work. This also, as I mentioned, deletes Washington Street. And if you do approve this change order, it would reduce the total price of the contract to $361,000, $361,86,026, and reduces it in the amount of $98,236.34. So it's subject to your review and approval, and I would recommend approving it.
All right, questions, comments?
Well, it seems to be pretty much in line with what we were talking about, so I don't really have any huge questions that I can see.
Nancy?
The question I have is, I hate to put money into Nix Park if we're going to be doing something different down the road, and I don't know what the council's desire is, but what are your thoughts on that?
If I could make one brief comment, between the boat ramp and Bayview, the surface is almost totally deteriorated. There are hundreds of potholes, and severe ones where it's gotten down to the base, and it really is a situation where it's not even safe to walk on it, you know? And so that work will not be wasted, regardless of what the future decision might be on Nix Park. It will still be there and be reconstructed, and even if Nix Park is reconfigured at one point, it still will be useful to do this work.
Okay. All right, any, anything further? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Or a second?
Second.
Motion to approve the project.
The change, deductive change order number one to the paving project, yes.
All right, anyone from the public wishing to address this? Ms. Spalding?
Sandra Spalding, 8207 Old Post Road. Good work, Tom. Very good work, that's all. Thank you.
Thumbs up for you, Tom.
Claudia Smith, 7335 Candlelight Court. I'm concerned about Washington. I know that we're deleting it temporarily, but have we heard anything about that project? Is anything going to happen?
Go ahead.
We have had plans submitted recently for the Cody River Single Family Residential Development. We've met with the developer. We believe at this point that they're going to move forward with the home construction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, bring it back to council. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it passes. Finally, we have fire department items to be declared surplus property.
I was going to defer the chief of council on this.
The list that you've got in front of you is a list of items that we've accumulated since I got here in 1992. None of, none of these items can be serviced any longer. We've used them for training. It's, it's no longer feasible to use any of these items any longer, and I just want to throw them away. So none of them have any city IDs on them. Most of the items were donated to us from other departments, and they've just worn out their use. So if there's any questions about any particular item, I'd be happy to answer for you.
So we have spring cleaning. That's exactly what I was going to say.
That's pretty much it. The back room of the station is free.
Chief of council is a hoarder.
I don't throw anything away.
Is there any scrap value to any of this stuff?
We're going to scrap the metal to STR, and then that money we collect from that would go to the volunteers.
Right, good, okay. Because, yeah, I know, I'm not, I know there's not a lot to be added there, but, you know, the steel bottles, the valves.
The AC unit, the window unit, we'll break that down.
Right, 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 that sort of stuff. It's got some value, and just, I just assume see something recycled is thrown away. Sure.
All right, do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Anybody from the public wishing to address this item? Yes, Mr. Milton?
Richard Milton, 53, 42, Blue Point. I know from previous experience, and having had my own antique business, I think you should maybe have a garage sale for some of these items, rather than scrap them. It's just my personal thoughts, you'll make a little more money. Somebody might welcome the fact that they got a piece of memorabilia from the Port Ritchie Fire Department.
The only problem I have with that is if somebody took one of these pieces of equipment that is in extremely poor condition, and were injured from it. That's my only concern.
I've seen in my past as well, that there's been stickers or stamps put on them, that this is for display purposes only, and that would clear any wrongdoing. They so, they sign a waiver, whatever.
I'd be happy to do that, if you want to do it. That's fine with me. We've got a lot more after this, though.
Okay, what's pleasure?
Oh, I think if they're cleaning house, and they want to move forward, go for it. It's a very small place, they need, they need space, so if this was your pleasure to do it this way, so be it. You're the chief. All right.
Well, again, and just quickly, a fire department should really not have anything in the building that's not up to code, so to speak. I mean, just having it around is somewhat problematic, you know?
Yeah, we had, we keep some of the stuff in the back, though, that we can use parts for other things, you know? But it's always in a place where it can never be confused for anything that is in service.
Right, 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 right.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Correct?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anything further before we adjourn? All right, we'll stand adjourned, and take about a five-minute break, and reconvene as the CRA.